I'd like to call to order the meeting of the King George County School Board. If you'd please stand, we're going to have an invocation prayer by Pastor Davis from Tabernacle Baptist Church.
Want to thank you for inviting me. Appreciate it. It's an honor to be the first preacher to open a prayer at a school board meeting in how many years? Only Jesus knows, I guess, but anyway, let's do look to Lord with a prayer. Our heavenly Father, we do vow in thanksgiving. We thank you, Lord, for those who serve in King George County. And Lord, may we have a good attitude of gratitude, a spirit of thanksgiving for those public servants. We certainly are thankful for Kerry, Lord, and for Kathy and for Gail and Matthew. Lord, we praise you for them and David, and Lord, we thank you for these folks who are willing to give all their time and efforts and abilities. And we pray, Lord, for, as King Solomon prayed to God, for wisdom. And we pray for wisdom for these leaders, as they would, that you would give them the insight and foresight and understanding to be able to make great decisions for our county, for our children. Then, Lord, we, Father, we want to confess our sins, our unfaithfulness to you, to your word. We're not always concerned with the same things that you're concerned with, Lord. We've become enamored, but with our own cares, with our own crisis, with our own concerns and our own ambitions. So we are many times too busy with, Lord, our own goals for us to realize, Lord, that you, we're working just wood, hay and stubble if we're not doing, Lord, the things that you would ask us and command us to do. So, Lord, the things the Scriptures calls gold, silver and precious stones. So, Lord, we ask you to redirect us and to revive us and to restore our passions for your passions. May we recognize who you are and, Lord, who you, how big a part you play in our lives. Lord, you've given us life and we praise your name. And, Lord, we know that you don't play games with our souls or our children's souls. And we ask you, Lord, that you would help these as they lead. And, Lord, may we have, Lord, as we have trusted you, you've trusted us with life. Lord, may we understand that this life on earth is a temporary assignment. And what we do here will, Lord, determine what happens in eternity, Lord, for we give an account for forever and ever and ever. So, Lord, we pray, restore our concerns for your concerns, your hearts, desires, Lord, for your cries. And, Lord, use us for your glory, that we may be found in the end faithful in all things. Lord, it all belongs to you. You've entrusted us with life. You've entrusted us, Lord, with a temporary assignment. We pray we take the assignments, Lord, that you've given us. And again, we thank you today for the Lord Jesus Christ, who paid the ultimate price so we might have life, abundant life, eternal life. We praise your wonderful name. Thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you for Jesus. Thank you for your love towards us. Our Lord, we praise your name. Amen and amen.
Amen. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have the group from Potomac, excuse me, yeah, from Potomac Elementary Staff Children to lead us in the pledge. After the pledge, remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. And now we have the opportunity for public comments. Ms. Rinko, do we have? Okay. Are there any online? Okay, we have Anthony. And Anthony, if you would, remember that it's limited to three minutes. And also just a reminder that you state your name and what voting district you're from. And then also remember to refrain from saying any names of any staff members or teachers.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anthony Stats, 9007 Claire Street. First off, I want to say thank you to our student. I hope you do well this year representing the students. My focus of tonight's talk was from a conversation I've had with five high school students last week, where they came to me with their concerns about drug use in the schools that they have seen past years, including this year. And it was really sad because these are students who are willing and able and wanting to learn. And we need to start getting serious with the addiction that's going on hitting our youth. Addiction is a horrible, horrible disease. My family knows it firsthand. So we need to stop treating this like it's not an addiction. When an adult says that they're addicted to cigarettes, or they're addicted to alcohol, or they're addicted to some other type of drug, we take it very seriously. We don't do it for, you know, students. And one of the students said that she was addicted to something, and she said, but there's no source, there's no resource. And she goes, I can go to the guidance counselor and tell them, but I would be scared for my academic future. So we need a safe, secure line where we can get these students help. And not only that, we must have a real zero tolerance policy for drugs on campus. And not only that, but drugs in general. Not zero tolerance, meaning you get OSS and then you come back the next day and it's a funny little goo goo with your friends. Oh, you know, you have to have serious consequences for these things, or people will never learn. And I think that's what's been lost. I can tell you, I always share my experience as a former student. I tell you the amount of times I've gone into the bathroom and smelt something that was a little funky and some drug or something. I've known multiple students who have had incidences. So we need to start tackling this because it's going straight to our future. It's impacting not only test grades and test scores. We're really losing a generation. And if we don't starting to address this, and it's not really the school board's mandate to fix it, but we need to start getting parents involved in the schools and seeing what kind of programs. There's a program out in Colorado where they have an actual staff member whose only job is to reach out to these kids and say, I'm a direct pipeline to help. No one else will know, not a soul will know, and I'm here to help. I'm here to get you resources. That's something King George schools really need to look at. And going back to my previous comments a week ago, well, not a week ago, but multiple weeks ago now, this ties in exactly with getting kids to making sure that they have community service hours to graduate. If we get kids in the communities, out of the streets, making sure that they get tied in the communities, we make them know, hey, there's help. If it's not through a school resource officer or a guidance counselor, maybe it's from the local mom and pop shop. So I really, really hope the school board can start addressing some of these issues because I know many of my friends, I'm losing them. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we don't seem to have anybody online. Nobody's come on in the last minute or two, and so that's all for the public comments. Changes to the agenda. I might have some, but before I speak, any other board members that have changes?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I am requesting that we move Action Item D out of action items and into discussion items. Since that was clearly a mistake, there has been no discussion about that.
Right, that's correct. That was one of my changes too. Thank you, Ms. Halk. We'll put that after the discussion item, lot to JBG. I think that'll be a little shorter, so we'll put that as Part B under discussion. Any others?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to remove the special meeting minutes for June 7th from the consent agenda. Separate that out for discussion.
For which date?
June 7th.
June 7th, the special meeting?
Right.
Want that under as a discussion item or part of, after we go through the rest of the minute or approve those, assuming we do, then you want a discussion about that one, correct? Any others? I have one other one. If you remember at the last board meeting, we talked about making a small change to the, what we say and what we present after a disciplinary hearing, and we added that sentence after quite a lengthy discussion. And so it was mentioned that, that one of the board members wanted to actually see that in writing. And so Dr. Boyd has written what that will look like. So that'll be a discussion item that we may end up having, actually having a motion, but right now we'll have it as a discussion. So we'll call that FOIA compliance or changes to the, to the wording of the special disciplinary hearing. And so that'll be a discussion item. All right. I did want to say before we start a presentation that we have three student representatives from the high school. And today we have Sutonius Brown, which he goes by Tony. And there's actually going to be three of them. I'll talk about that in a minute. And maybe, Tony, you could introduce yourself and then also tell us why there's going to be three of you. The other two are going to be Chad Brown and Connor Whedon, but Tony is with us tonight. Do you want to stand up and introduce yourself? Yeah, it's on. Or sit.
Yes, so I first want to say that it's a privilege and an honor to be sitting up here with you guys. We have a lot of great things going on in the school, and I love to share that and work alongside the school board members. Myself, I'm Sutonius Brown II, Tony for short. Moved here back in 2010 when my daddy got stationed here over here at Dogland. Ever since been involved with the community, went to King George Elementary, King George Middle School, and I'm now a senior at King George High School. I've been involved within programs like JRTC, some other clubs. And right now I'm currently the sitting commanding officer of the unit over there at the high school. Speaking on the two other student reps, Chad Brown and Con Whedon. So this year we decided to make it a team, a team effort. Last year we had Jackson Rosner. He did an amazing, amazing job, but it's tough to put all of that on one person. So not only having three members to help out with surveys within the school, asking the students, connecting with the students, seeing what they need and what we need to support in order to enhance the growth and the success within our school system. But you also get three amazing perspectives from the school too. Myself being involved with JRTC, Chad Brown being involved with a lot of the sports happening, and Con Whedon being involved with theater and music. So it's amazing, amazing opportunity that we have to share this with the school board and promote the growth and success for students here.
Welcome. We appreciate, we're glad you're here. We appreciate you, and we look forward to meeting the other two. Thank you. You'll do a rotation, and I assume you'll be making sure there's one of you each time, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, Tony, and welcome. All right, let's go move forward with the building and instructional calendar. Oh, good. There you go. Nope. Oh. Not yet. Try again.
Hello.
There you go.
There we go. All right. Good evening, Chairman Bush, board members, Dr. Boyd, Mrs. Rinko, and our new student representative, Tony Brown. Very nice to meet you. And our community members. I'm here this evening to share with you some information about building our instructional calendar. So this fall, we will pull together a committee and start to look at calendars for next school year. So I put together a short presentation just to go over a few things because I'm sure the community is interested in how we arrive at the calendar that our students use and our families use for instructional purposes. So the calendar committee comes together to provide the superintendent and ultimately you, the school board, a recommendation. And the committee uses policy first and then data points and then some other pieces that we examine that, that play a part in our families and our surrounding community. So the members of the commune or of our calendar committee include the administrators from the schools, teachers, teacher representative, and a parent representative, and some of our other stakeholders. And together we meet, we go over this information and we make a recommendation. So the non-negotiables for building a calendar, there really are only two, but they really define the type of calendar that we will build. So traditionally, we have created a calendar that is 180 days or 180 instructional days. But post-COVID, many school divisions have examined the calendar and looked at using instructional hours. So the absolute minimum instructional hours is 990. Within those hours, we need to make sure that our students are going to school for at least five and a half hours a day, which does not include the lunchtime. So it can include recess and it can include passing in halls, so class changes. The other thing that we look at is an interesting, I think this happened when a lot of the schools started going to school pre-Labor Day. Another thing that we have to make sure that we do is we have to provide the Friday off before pre-Labor Day and the following Monday, which is Labor Day. So we have to build those into our calendar as well. So the development process, really, we look at current calendars, the one that we have in place right now. We review and compare neighboring calendars. We're involved with Planning District 16. And so in that planning district, we have Caroline County, Spotsylvania County, Stafford County, and Fredericksburg City, as well as King George. So we try to look at those calendars specifically, since we're in that planning district. And then we look at other considerations, which I'll go into in just a moment. So the considerations are grand. There are a lot of them. And all of them are important. But we try to remember that the calendar is an instructional calendar. So the first thing that we want to do is we want to protect instructional time. So uninterrupted instructional time. We also have to consider, once the instruction has been provided and students have been given information, we need to assess information. So there are a lot of testing dates that are also put into the calendar. So for example, at the high school, there are two sessions of SOLs. Because we are a block schedule, at the high school, we test SOLs in the fall, and then we test them another session in the spring. At the high school, our AP tests are provided to students in the spring. And then the state also now requires us to provide growth assessment tests. So those are also, we also have to build those into the calendar. So there, there's a lot of data that the schools glean from these testing sessions. We also have to consider professional development for teachers. And so professional development for all of our teachers at the elementary, middle and at the high level. We also have to provide professional time for teachers. So after the assessment, what then happens? We need to look at the data. We need to look at data trends. We need to adjust the instruction. So professional time is important as well. The calendar has to be family friendly. If our families are on a holiday, a federal holiday, we want our students to be on a federal holiday as well, especially since we have a military base in our county. So we try to build a family friendly calendar, our calendar. We have to consider athletic schedules because our students are competing with students in some of those other divisions that I mentioned to you, to you before and outside of those divisions. And we also have to consider unique programs like our Chesapeake Bay Governor's School and Commonwealth Governor's School. And also we're getting ready to join another special school with the labs, excuse me, the lab school. And we also try to align to some of the counters in the region because our students are. And because our students are engaged in the Commonwealth Governor's School with students in the region and Stafford or in that, in that program. Components have included either 990 hours or 180 days. This past year, we had a calendar that was under 180 days, but we worked our calendar on hours. We have traditionally had a pre-Labor Day start. I can say it's tradition now because we've done it for quite a few years. We have Memorial Day as our end date traditionally for the last few years. And we observe federal holidays in the calendar. And something that was brought into the calendar a few years ago was a spring break that was the same week annually. And this was something that our region chose to do because it was easier, not easier, but made a great impact on our testing schedule. So when the spring break sort of bounced around in the calendar year, it was difficult for our testing schedule for SOLs and AP tests and the types of testing that occur at the high school level. So that was something that was added to the calendar that's, that was a little bit different. But all of our counterparts in Planning District 16 use that annual spring break. So our last year, or I'm sorry, this year's calendar, there are 177 days currently. And there were 12 professional planning days and three professional half days. And those planning days are for professional development and for teacher planning. And our student holidays, there were 26, or there are 26 days of holiday in the calendar. And not included in that, there are five student days off. What that, what that means is that there are days that students get off, but teachers must work. So we have 31 days that students have off, not including weekends, in that instructional calendar. So our work is large. We have, we have a great scope of work to do when we look at calendars to try to fit all of this into one beautiful calendar. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I have a question. I, that 180 days was always mandatory, and you're saying that in 2020 it changed to allowing 990 for a whole lot of reasons, obviously, all of the COVID. Or has it always been 990 and 180?
So it's always been, for as long as I can remember, 180 or 990, a minimum of 990.
Okay.
But traditionally in Virginia, we have had a lot of snow days.
Right.
One year, not too long ago, we had 16 days off due to inclement weather, whether it was snow or ice. So we have to consider, we can't predict those kinds of things. So we've always traditionally tried to stick to the 180 days in the calendar. There was, there were laws that stated things like if you went 180 days or if you made up your days, then you wouldn't lose your funding. But now the language has become a little bit more forgiving and supports more of either types of calendar. So.
Yeah. When I, when I retired 12 years ago as an administrator in the school that I was in, you did 180 days and if you were short, you literally had to go to school in the summertime. It's nice to hear, well, it's been 12 years. It's nice to hear that they have become a little more lax with that. So that's good. Thank you. Any, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work.
Sure. You're welcome.
All right, the consent agenda. Again, we're pulling out the June 7th special meeting as at 4 o'clock. So we're looking at the June 7th regular meeting. It was at 6:00 PM and the June 26th regular meeting. Any comments about either one of those? If not, do I have a motion to approve those two?
So moved.
Second, somebody?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and those two meetings are passed and approved. All right, Mr. Rolls, now you want to speak to the June 7th special meeting?
It's basically along the same lines as we had that line discussion last time, but FOIA, which I don't think any of us have a desire to repeat right now. So I understood that we weren't going to bring that up again until the next meeting, so I didn't submit any more information for consideration in the packet. But since this is in here and it would impact that, what I would suggest is that we just move all FOIA discussions, including these minutes and anything else that we were going to discuss to next meeting. And then I will be sure to include or submit the appropriate FOIA materials into the packet so we can have a much shorter and more productive conversation about it.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So we, we talked about this at length. We certainly went back and looked at the minutes and made sure we got the gist of what we talked about as far as the FOIA needs in our closed meeting minutes. We went back and forth on the June 7th meeting. We decided to present these as the way they were discussed in the meeting. It was, which you'll see later on in our discussion section, where I provided an example of the statement that we'll make moving forward. We had a difficult time putting that into the June 7th meeting minutes because obviously it didn't happen that way. So we stopped and let, and left the June 7th minutes as they were, given the fact that the FOIA conversation and the conversation that we had concerning closed meeting minutes occurred after the June 7th meeting. So moving forward, and when we get to the discussion section of the board meeting tonight, I can certainly talk through some of the changes we've made in terms of your request for FOIA. But the June 7th meeting, we, we held off on putting anything additional in there at this time.
So if I understand that correctly, Dr. Boyd and Mr. Rolls, is that we really can't go back and change something that's already occurred? That's, that's the bottom line?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Rolls, I think at this point, we can't go back and change something that has already happened. But in moving forward, I think it's, we're going to talk about that in the discussion items. So how do you feel about us going ahead and approving those minutes since we really can't change those?
Well, I still prefer we have a discussion first, have all of our information in front of us so we can decide appropriately.
The discussion that we're going to have today, you mean, on the FOIA that Mr. Dr. Boyd's going to talk a little bit about?
Wants to present what he has, but then we'll also have more information in the packet next time. It's easier if we have that to review at a time.
So what you're saying is you want to present some more information to be in the packet for the next board meeting. And in that regard, you still wanted to wait and not approve these minutes, even though we can't really go back and change these?
Because I. Certainly do our best to document what happened, the best we can. So yes, I'd like to wait. Yes, the, the meetings already happened, but the point of approving minutes is to say that that's a true and accurate representation of what happened. And so looking at all the facts and understanding our options for doing that well, I think is, makes the most sense.
So let me see if I understand this. You're going to put some information that will be in our packet for a discussion for next time regarding disciplinary hearings and making sure that we're FOIA compliant, right? That's number one.
It's a requirement. It's requirements for meeting minutes.
Okay. Number two is you want to go ahead and look at and review everything that we did on June the seventh at that disciplinary hearing. And any changes then that you felt as though that we, if our memories are enough to go through all that, then to make some changes then to those minutes?
Potentially. That's what we look at the, what's required first, make sure that we're doing what's required, to the best of our ability.
I, I hear you, and I guess when you go back two months, I guess it sometimes would be a little difficult to remember all the details. I don't know. Other board members, how do you feel about this? Yes, Ms. Gonzalez.
Excuse me. So I, I don't see an issue with drawing a line after today and revisiting this in the future, much like we have in the past, and approving these minutes as they were. I think continuing to deliberate over this is not an efficient use of anyone's time.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Any other board member comment on this?
I, I agree with Ms. Gonzalez. I, I also, I, I guess have a question if we go back to that point. What, what prevents you from going back for the last forty-nine years?
All right. Any other?
That's the argument for delaying it because they are approved, then they're approved. So what's, what's my meeting? I don't think it makes any difference.
Any other comments? Okay, do I have a, it sounds like I might have a motion in regards to these minutes, and I know it might be different than what Mr. Rolls is saying. I do agree totally, Mr. Rolls, and Miss Rankoff, we can be sure to put Mr. Rolls' presentation that he's going to make on the agenda for the next board meeting concerning disciplinary hearings and being a FOIA compliant. So we will do that for sure. But regarding the June seventh meeting, do I have, it sounds like I might have a motion in regards to that?
Certainly. I move that we adopt the June seventh, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting minutes.
Check up.
Okay, it's been motioned that we adopt the June seventh, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting, and it's been seconded. Any more communication? Or discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying, well, I'll tell you what, let's do a count with this one. Let's go one by one. Signify by saying aye or nay. We'll start with Ms. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Hulk?
Aye.
Ms. Hoover?
Nay.
Mr. Rolls?
Nay.
I vote aye. So motion passes. We have approved the minutes for June seventh, the special meeting. But I want you, I want to assure you, Mr. Rolls, that I do think it is important that we are compliant, and I look forward to discussing that more at the next meeting. And so that will be on the agenda. All right, we have the policy renewed but not revised. I think I understand this. It means that, that there wasn't any changes, but they've been renewed. Is that right?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Every, if we remember back, there's, I think, a five-year period where all of the policies are reviewed. So these were policies that were reviewed but not revised.
Okay.
They are just the same ones, and we're letting you know that they have been reviewed.
Okay. I don't think there's any motion involved with this because there, you just reviewed the policy and we're continuing with them.
Yes, sir.
All right. So we're moving forward?
What is, Mr. Chair, it is listed on the consent agenda, right? The policy is reviewed but not revised. Typically, the consent agenda is for us to can.
Yeah.
Consent, so typically I would.
All right. Yeah, you're right. You're right. For a consent agenda, there does need to be a motion. All right.
Okay.
We have the, these policies, CMA, IGBI, IGEE, IKEB, and JC. Do I have a motion regarding those that have been reviewed?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the reviewed but not revised policies of CMA, IGBI, IGEE, IKEB, and JC.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Those have been reviewed and revised, and it's passed. All right, action items, design-build guidelines. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, you do have a handout before you, which is titled King George County Public School Meeting Agenda Item August twenty-first. So again, we're continuing to push forward with our Potomac Modular. You do have a handout there which is stapled, and we do have at this point our preferred layout or kind of a rough rendition of what that modular will look like. We have gotten to the point this evening where Mrs. Megan Pitts has joined us from King George County Procurement Office. And in order for us to continue to push forward with the project as presented, I'm going to request that we adopt the guidelines for selection, evaluation, and award of the design-build contracts as presented on August twenty-first. And if I could just provide a little bit of background, and then I'll pause for any questions that you may have of, of myself or Mrs. Pitts. The existing King George County purchasing ordinance at section two dash two-four references potential use of design-build as provided by the Code of Virginia. However, the King George County School Board hasn't formally adopted design-build guidelines required to use this alternative procurement method. This procurement method allows a contractual relationship with a single entity to both perform professional services of design and to perform the construction of the approved design. This differs from the traditional procurement method in which a project is fully engineered or designed by an architect or engineer, and then the construction work is procured by an invitation to bid. The procurement method is needed for the Potomac Elementary School modular project. This project uses existing footers and available infrastructure to construct a six-classroom modular unit used to house our staff and students and expand our capacity at Potomac Elementary School. I'll pause there for any questions that you may have of myself or Megan.
Any comments, questions? Yes.
Mr. Chair. Dr. Boyd, can you just refresh our memory on where this is going? Is it using the footers or the, the trailers that were removed?
Yes. So, yeah, so the footers of the existing trailers that were removed, all of the infrastructure is there. It's the most cost-effective method. And in order for us to get it done with those existing footers and that existing infrastructure, we need that, that design-build method in order to plug a modular unit into that existing infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
And I assume these classrooms are the typical size, was it thirty-four by thirty-four, whatever that is for a classroom, and it will hold?
Yes, they've met the standards that VDOE and the state require.
And what about, there's, isn't there a modular in the front of the school? That's, that's for storage, right?
Those are trailers in front of Potomac Elementary School, and that'll be another story for another day, but we certainly are working on those as well.
All right, thank you. All right, any more questions? It's, and these are fine. I'll be honest, I'm just a little sad that we have to go to doing this when it's clear that we probably need another new elementary school. But anyway, yes, Mr. Rolls, did you have a question?
Yeah. This is the first time in here I didn't get a chance to go through a lot of detail. So what was in the packet had a lot of highlighting in it. Can you speak to the significance of the highlighting or what the source of all that was?
Yeah. So Megan, if you want, I think what those were, were highlights that referenced edits that made it King George Public Schools document. So there was some, I'm trying to turn to it now. Do you have that as well, Megan? Okay.
So there was a previous version of this document that was designed specifically for the county and not for the schools. You're a separate authority, so the language needed to be changed. So those highlights represent where it deviates from the original version referencing King George County to reference the schools instead.
Thanks. And I'm just curious. So obviously, it does acknowledge that bidding is the preferred method, and why is that? I'm curious why that process is not appropriate in this particular instance.
So under Virginia code, competitive sealed bidding is the standard procurement practice for construction projects. You can, with prior designation, use alternate methods. Design-build is one of those alternate methods that if it lends itself to public benefit, you can, you can go after a procurement that way. And in this case, for the, the school's modular construction, time is of the essence. And if you went the competitive sealed bidding route, the, the traditional standard procurement for this, you would have to get stamped plans from an engineering firm, and that takes time. So in the interest of time, design-build was deemed the most appropriate and effective method for this project. And you need to have guidelines in place before you pursue it.
You say it was deemed the most effective method? So, but who was looking at this to decide that, out of curiosity?
A combo of myself, Dr. Boyd, some internal county staff, because your, your procurement is handled by the county.
County engineer.
Yep, county engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Those are good questions. Thank you. And thank you for your answers. Any, any other questions? Yes, Ms. Gonzalez.
So I think this question is for Dr. Boyd. So this, this is on the action items, right? So this, so the adoption here is to adopt the design-build guidelines, which are in the document that has been revised to be specific to the schools. But so the recommendation is also, well, the background is referencing the Potomac modular, but we are just adopting the guidelines that will be used for the modular. So it's kind of, they're related, but we're adopting the guidelines specifically at this point, is that right?
So the motion is going to be just to adopt the guidelines.
Guidelines, okay.
Just for everyone's
Okay.
information, it's because we're, we need those guidelines for the Potomac modular.
Okay, okay, got it. All right.
But there won't be a separate motion for the build for, you know, we're going to motion to accept the guidelines, but there's not something else that's going to come over. You automatically, by accepting this, you, you'll be able to go forward with the.
We'll be able to go forward with putting it out to bid.
Right.
Right.
And then from there, we'll come back.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
That's, I just wanted to be clear. All right. So I, obviously, you don't know exactly, but how long a period of time you think that'll take?
Well, with the, with you approving it hopefully tonight, I can have a solicitation out tomorrow. And then that sits out there for thirty days. There's a question-and-answer period that's afforded to anybody that's interested in doing the project. And then with design-build, you're required to have a committee review anything that comes in. And we've already had discussions on who would serve on that committee if you choose to move forward with this.
Okay. The committee consists of what type of people and just?
Well, you're required with design-build to have an architect or engineer on the project, and it's probably a good idea to have an architect or engineer on the evaluation committee. And we've already identified that Bryce Young or Travis Kuzenberry or both will be on that committee.
All right, good. Thank you. Good answers. Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve these new guidelines?
I move that we adopt the guidelines for selection, evaluation, and award of design-build contracts as presented on August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It is approved. Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Megan.
All right, next, the religious exemption requests. We've had three sets of those come in, and I believe it was a total of sixteen, and I believe I've heard from every board member. And that we had no problem with any of those, those that applied, and we all reviewed them. So we'll be able to, I am, we'll look forward to a motion to approve all sixteen that have requested to have the religious exemption from attendance be approved. Do I have a motion? I did want to say one thing. There's a few of those in there, as I read, that they reapplied even though they had applied in previous years. And just to let the community know that once you have been accepted and your request has been approved, that you do not need to reapply every year, however you can, if you wish, and it is probably helpful for us if you do. But it is not required. All right. Do I have a motion about those sixteen that sent in their requests to be approved?
I move that we approve sixteen religious exemptions as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, it's just a couple of comments.
Okay.
Yeah, it was an honor to, to read those request letters, and they were very beautifully written and touching. So it was a blessing to read them, and I am a little bit disappointed that we won't have the pleasure of having those families in our school community, however. But there were one issue brought up in there that I won't go into length now, but I'll bring up more during board discussion. That was a question of whether there is such a thing as religious freedom in public schools or not. And again, I'll bring that up more in board comments later.
Well, there, if you notice in the discussion, Mr. Rolls, that that particular policy is in the discussion, talking about religious exemption.
Okay, well, I'm saying I'll bring up the comments during my board comment later.
All right. Any other discussion before we take a vote? All right, all those in favor, did we already take a vote? No, we didn't. That was the discussion. Thank you. All right, all those in favor of approving the sixteen that have applied for religious exemption signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. They are approved. And thank you for those that may be listening online. They have been approved. We appreciate it. All right, local plan for the education of the gifted.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it is that time of year again where we approve our local plan for the education of the gifted. We have Mrs. Harris here this evening. If you have any questions, you do have a copy of the local plan for the education of the gifted in your packet. If you want to review that, or if you reviewed that and have any questions, we'll certainly pause here for those. If not, I would ask that the board approve that as presented.
Yes, I did have a couple of questions. I noticed that in the, oh, I'll ask my questions later. Any questions anybody else had? I had to be respectful of everybody. Everybody else was fine, all right. I was just curious and looking at that, we basically looks like that we use, and I know this, I saw this last year, it seems like also, that we're only using two areas, math and English, to determine whether they're gifted and talented. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just wondering, this may sound kind of funny, but I was thinking about Einstein, actually looked at a little bit, and that he failed math. And thinking about, you know, and he also did very poorly in English, and there was even concerns that he might have been dyslexic, and yet he's the finest physicist probably in the last, you know, hundred or so years. Obviously, he excelled in things like science tremendously. And I'm just wondering, I noticed that there are other things that we could use, I guess, the general intelligence aptitude and the career in technology aptitude and visual and performing arts aptitude. Is there any other divisions that use those, or is it pretty common that we just use mathematics and English as the determination factors? Is that, is that a clear question?
Um, it really comes down to larger divisions have more funding and more staffing, so.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to know, we can expand this as much as you want to expand it, but then you have to be able to cover the cost of it. This was, this is a result of a committee. We do have a gifted advisory committee that went through this all last year and put this document together and revised it. We also went through in two thousand and twenty-one, a technical review from the VDOE, which we had a lot of, you know, meeting the standards or exceeding the standards of our plan that we have in place. So we did, those revisions were added to the new plan that's in front of you. They were very minor, but overall, we kind of, you know, our stakeholders and our advisory committee are our parents, our teachers, our administrators, and, and anyone else interested in joining the committee. And this is a product of, you know, the program that we have in place, which is kind of exemplary compared to larger school divisions, really, if you, if you really want to look at the time and, and the program that our students that truly are identified to receive gifted services are getting through King George County.
Okay. And besides, obviously, the governor's schools and so on, I'm just, if you don't mind, and please forgive me for this, but what are some of the other gifted and talented programs that we have? Obviously, the governor's schools. What are some of the other ones?
We, we service, in our model, we service, we have language arts classes, English classes, and math classes.
AP.
And then in high school, they get advanced, but they don't have to just be identified as gifted, but everyone has the opportunity to take dual enrollment classes, AP classes, so they can accelerate that way as well. And of course, we have the governor's school.
Right. I'm just wondering, you know, I don't know whether you're familiar with the Abbott program, and we don't have that here. But it is another gifted and talented program. I just wondered if we, I'm sorry, she's.
Money.
Yeah, it is. It's money. But I mean, I was involved with, when I was administrator, the Abbott program was for gifted and talented. It was excellent. But you're right, it involves money. I'm just wondering, do we look into the possibility of those each year? I know it's part of the whole budget process, but do we look into possible other programs like Abbott?
We try to look in different programming. We try to look at program that we can provide here internally as well. Like this past summer, we had a gifted camp for our elementary that we've been trying to do for years, but we have to have staffing for it. So it was really cool that we were able to provide that along with our summer programming. So yeah, we have a committee. Welcome. Maybe you'll be the person on our committee. We'll meet three times in the upcoming year, so we're always moving and looking to ways to expand and improve the program.
Well, I appreciate your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I think those are very good questions. This is, I think, mostly just a point for, thank you, Ms. Harris. I think, you know, we've talked, because I, those are good questions. I've wondered some of those myself. And I know we talked about last year, and I know there's a plan for. And I know we talked about last year, and I know there's a plan for across the schedule of our meetings this year to get updates from each of the advisory committees, right? I think that's a great example of the value of some of those out briefs, right? And so this, I understand we want to, you know, this, we need to adopt the local plan. This would be a good, like, maybe moving forward, when this is adopted, it could be tied into the meeting where there's an overarching presentation on the committee that might, to just kind of answer a lot of those questions instead of having to do it multiple times. Just food for thought going forward. Yeah.
That's good.
Yes, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to that. All right, do I have a motion? My computer just automatically didn't give me a choice. It says we're restarting, and it just came back up, so. Do I have a motion to approve the plan for the education of the gifted and talented?
Chair, I move that we approve the local plan for the education of the gifted as presented on August 21st, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, outstanding. All right, we are obviously moving the mono policies to a discussion item, authorization of signature in the absence of the superintendent. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Mr. Chair, it's been so great having Dr. Troy Wright with us, and we're here to give him some more responsibilities tonight.
That's good.
All right, so each year, we are required by the Department of Education to approve and authorize persons to sign all Virginia Department of Education reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the absence of the division superintendent. My recommendation is to authorize and approve Dr. Troy Wright as a designate for signature in the absence of the superintendent for the period of August 21st, 2023, through the end of June 30th, 2024.
Is that, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the motion. Is it, is it written, or did you write it, or is it just verbal?
This is in the recommendation, it's in the packets. The motion could be to authorize and approve. You guys should have it in your packet. Do you see it there or no? No?
I'm sorry. Here, just give me.
I move that we authorize and approve Dr. Troy Wright as a designate for signature in the absence of the superintendent for the period of August 21st, 2023, through the end of June 30th, 2024.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. You're the man. If Dr. Boyd's not around, there is. All right, moving forward, the discussion items. The first one is a policy JEG, and Dr. Boyd and I discussed a little bit of this just before the meeting is, I believe one of the big things is that we could make a change concerning the date, if you want to speak to that, Dr. Boyd?
Sure. As you guys know, we approved the religious exemptions this evening. Currently, as it is practice in our division, we require those religious exemptions to be given to us on August 15th. Now that we've have an early start date prior to August 15th, we thought it'd be very advantageous to review these prior to the start of school. So that if there were any need to make any modifications to those applications, then we would still have the opportunity over the summer to do that. And then school is yet to start in case any of those individuals end up coming to school based on our recommendations. So the suggestion would be to place, it doesn't necessarily have to be in policy, but in practice, receiving the religious exemptions prior to, or if there's a proposed date, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that if I may, and maybe some of you may also need to speak to it. I've had three, two or three phone calls, people applying for this religious exemption, and part of the, they actually got very worried because they said, school's starting, and the board has to approve it, you know, what do I do? And they're right. Here we are, school's been in session for, what, a week and a half or two weeks? And, and we're just approving those, you know, religious exemptions right now. So I agreed with them, and I assured them that it's, you know, don't worry, we're working this out, we're reading through them. But I would like to propose, if you look at that, I believe there's a copy of it there, when it says, any request for exemption under Virginia Code 22.1, this is the second paragraph, by the way, 22.1-254B1 must be submitted in writing to the King George County School Board, I would like to say, on or before June 30th. Now, you may think that's rather early, but you think about it, oftentimes, we only have one meeting in July this year, and I do, I thank the board for allowing us to postpone or cancel the meeting earlier this month because of some illnesses in some of the board members' families, including my own. But even if we didn't have that, oftentimes, I think it seems like last year, we also eliminated one of the meetings so we could have a longer summer break for the board members. So I think that asking for this to be done on or before June 30th is appropriate, and obviously, I think most families already know that they're going to be doing that. And June 30th then gives us time to approve it easily before school starts. But this is a suggestion that can end up being a motion, but before I entertain the motion, let's discuss it a little bit.
Mr. Chair, having been in that.
I don't think you're on, Ms.
I turned it off. I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's okay.
We do have to take into consideration that since we live in the area with a military base, we do have people transferring in and out of the base, and many times that activity happens during the summer. So we do need to take into consideration those potential summer transfers either out or in. We, there are various ways of taking care of that, but I, I think having a date is appropriate unless you want to say within X number of weeks prior to start of school, or something to that version.
It's a good point, Ms. Hawk. We should, we could also say X number of weeks before school, or actually give a specific date. Either one of those would probably work. In regard to your concern, though, I think that's a good point, you know, any, any exceptions to this would have to have prior approval of the board, or something like that. So that someone who may come in and say, hey, I just got here and it's the middle of July, we'll get this in and we'll approve it. I think by adding another sentence there, let's do this. I mean, we have some ideas. Let me, if it's all right with the board, I'll put a sentence here, and we can look at it next time, and then actually look at as an action item. Taking what you said into consideration, and then also either number of weeks or a specific date. Any other comments before we leave this discussion?
I have a quick copy, you said there was a chair, so you're saying maybe put in provision that you have to, they have to request it within so many weeks of moving to the county if they were to move after the deadline? Is that what you said?
Yeah, we put, just, we would make a broad statement, maybe after putting, say, five weeks before school starts or June 30th, whatever, and then we would say, any exceptions to this policy would have to have approval of the school board or something like that.
Allowance for exceptions, okay.
Yeah, allowing for exceptions, because obviously, Ms. Hawk is right, especially in the community we're in, people do come in or go out, and they may end up coming in the third week now, and we would deal with that as an individual exception. Any other comments?
Okay, so the next. I guess a good question on the lines would be, so we do have a truancy officer, so in that situation, someone moves during the school year, at what point does it become a problem with them? I guess it'd be relevant information.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and that actually was part of the point of what happened this year just now, because we're two weeks late with this. Is obviously, I made sure this was on the agenda, and I think I wrote an email to all of you that we were going to discuss or talk about this. And obviously, then I communicated with Ms. Fisher to communicate to those families or whatever that, don't worry, you're not going to have the truant officer knocking on your door. But I think in the future that we put a sentence like this in so that we could, you know, in the board meeting, assuming there's at least one board meeting before school starts, to approve those exceptions. And if they end up moving then even after school starts or coming in after school starts, then we can receive those and probably still send those out, and we'll all read them, and we'll let them know that, you know, at the next board meeting, this will be discussed and possibly approved. And therefore, do not be concerned about the possibility of truancy for your son or daughter, assuming that they'll be approved. And if they're not approved, then that's a further discussion. Any other conversation about that? All right, Ms. Ranko, if you'd be sure that's on the agenda for next time? All right. All right, moving forward now with the one change that we made, two changes actually, but before we do that, I'll go into the model policy that the governor actually suggested, which is a large discussion, and this is the first meeting, we're talking about it. Let's talk about a little smaller issue, and that is the change that we discussed last time about the sentence that we added after coming out of the closed disciplinary hearings. Dr. Boyd, I believe you wrote something about that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, you guys also have a handout in front of you, and it looks like a generic version of our school board special meeting minutes. Took a stab at this as best I could. We had that very good conversation last time about including a sentence that said something of the nature, and if I get it wrong, then pardon me, but it says, the school board's moves to approve disciplinary action as discussed, is the note I took last time. If you take a look at our closed meeting minutes that I provided, what you will see is a new paragraph, paragraph number three in the closed session section. And what that is, is we, the first paragraph is we go into closed session. The second paragraph is we return to open section and pursue that we only discuss the items that we intended to discuss in the meeting, and we certify in that second paragraph. And then the final paragraph states, a board member moves that the King George County School Board reconvenes an open meeting and takes a vote on the membership pursuant to State Code 2.2-3711.B, that the school board moves to approve disciplinary action as discussed, and then we would second that and hopefully pass that. So that's, that's the added section that we included in the minutes. Hopefully, that suffices.
Thank you for working on this, Dr. Boyd. Any discussion about this? I believe that's pretty close. Ms. Gonzalez, you were the one that actually suggested that sentence. It may not be the exact words, but does that give the idea of what you had mentioned last time?
Yeah. And, and so again, that section number there, that 2.23711.B in the Code of Virginia is, I think, what Mr. Rolls was referring to last time. No resolution ordinance rule, contract, regulation, or motion adopted, passed, or agreed to, and a closed meeting shall become effective unless the public body following the meeting reconvenes an open meeting and takes a vote of the membership on such resolution ordinance, rule, contract, regulation, or motion. So we tried to use that same reference in, in the way that we stated that final paragraph.
That's good. So moving forward then, I think this probably should be a motion because we're going to agree to change the way that we come out of a closed session into an open session and the wording that we're going to use. So that means this will be at least in the chairs section about making sure that this is done that complies with FOIA, and thank you, Mr. Rolls, for bringing all this to our attention. I believe this accomplishes one of, at least one of the things that you were concerned about.
Right. I have to think about, I think really, for all that discussion, this is all I was looking to accomplish with all that. So I'll think about whether it's even necessary to put more FOIA stuff in the packet. You know, as Dr. Boyd read, the section I sent out to a few of you, it just, it's not official till we vote on it in public, and we need to record that in the minutes.
Right, which I believe.
That's what this would do, yes.
I believe this covers that. Right. So let's go ahead, just to be safe, let's, can I consider taking this from discussion to an action item? So we can move forward with this and not have to discuss it anymore, that this will be the practice or maybe regulation that would go with, or just simply guidelines? Yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but we do have our, all of our meeting templates are either files or regulations. So I would just recommend that we include this perhaps, and I mean, we could do it now, I guess, as long as we go through and make sure we recommend which file or regulation we're replacing with this one.
Okay.
I don't think we have a, it sounds like a good idea, but I don't think we actually have a form for this. It's simple.
I think we do.
I think we do.
Yeah, I think.
I'll look it up.
So yeah, either way, I guess, does that make sense to bring it back next time, making an actual?
Do we have, Dr. Boyd, do you?
I'm not sure. We were looking for it pretty hard and couldn't find that template. We found the regular meeting template, which we looked at a couple of meetings ago and revised. The special meeting template, we didn't, we couldn't find it. So it would be, I think, along with our regular meeting minutes, if it doesn't exist, then it should.
And it would exist as a file, I believe.
Correct. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think it would exist as a file if we can't.
Unless Ms. Gonzalez can find it. Were we asking to create one then?
Ms. Gonzalez is pretty good here. Let's see if she can find it.
So we have special school board meetings, file BDD. That's just the meetings.
But that's where it would go. What is that, file BDD?
Well, I'm looking, I know, I know we have the, that's the, that's the policy. Hold on. Special meeting agenda format, it is file BDDC-F2, King George County School Board Meeting, Special Meeting slash 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 Work Session. So what we might want to do potentially is break out site? The file, it's a file, it's BDDC-F2. We might want to break it into two and have a work session one and a special meeting one.
Good point.
So maybe replace F2 with a new F3 and F4, something like that.
That's a good idea.
Oh, probably more specifically, this is specifically for student hearings, right?
Right.
So just call it that.
So why don't we then, since this is very specific, and it will be something that will be a file in our policies, let's, next time, we'll have the exact wording with the exact file that Ms. Gonzalez is referring to, and then we'll just simply put that as an action item.
So yeah, maybe then you need, I don't know if you need three, it seems like a lot, like a special meeting, a disciplinary hearing, and a work session or something.
Right.
So actually, two additional ones, the disciplinary hearing would be F3, and the work session would be F4 or vice versa?
Or maybe, maybe the one that exists could, could stay as it is, since it's special meeting slash work session, and you would just add a new F3 that's specific to disciplinary hearings.
Okay.
I think you just need to add one, disciplinary hearings, F3, that's good. Okay, let's come back and do that since we don't have the, the file number or anything. Let's wait to make sure that that's clear. All right, so Ms. Ranko, if you make sure that's in the agenda for next time. All right, now, hopefully, all of you received this model policy from the from the state office, from the governor's office, and really, the, all the beginning pages of this, all the way to page 12, or page 11, is actually just simply the purpose and stating a bunch of things, but the actual sample policy that he would like us to look at begins on page 12. So what I'd like to do with this, this is the first foray into this as a board, and as we know, there's many divisions throughout the entire state that are in the, some of them haven't even begun to talk about this, others have already made some decisions about policies, have made changes to this, and others have accepted it pretty much like it is. For tonight, if it is acceptable to the board, I would like each one of us, and hopefully, we've had time to read through this, and it's pretty significant, to make a comment the first time around for each board member, approximately three to five minutes with no rebuttal back and forth, just simply a comment about you reading this and some positives, negatives, how you feel, and then maybe a second time around after everybody's spoken once, then a second time around. And then if there's any suggestions you have, or in the future, how we might handle with this, I know that Ms. Hawk mentioned something to me that she would mention in her comment. But so we're going to talk about this in two different times. You don't have to take five minutes. You can take two minutes if you want. But let's give everybody, all five board members, a chance to speak on this for a couple of minutes and do that twice, and then we'll leave this and give a chance for our constituents and even the public, and we can talk to others about, so we get feedback and that we can make sure it is representative of our entire county and the division. I do not think it is valuable necessarily to look at, we have some specific time when this would be an action item, but I do believe it's very valuable to begin the discussion now because many of our community knows this is out there, and I think to postpone this any longer without beginning the discussion is not wise. So is that agreeable, two times, each of us with a comment, no more than five minutes long, and then we'll do that twice, and then we'll move on. Make sense? All right, I'll begin with Mr. Rolls. Or maybe I should ask for a volunteer. I'm sorry, I'm putting pressure if you're not ready, Mr. Rolls. Are you ready?
I'm ready. I'm just pulling the page up.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is obviously a big topic. I'm not going to try to tackle everything right this moment, but I do want to just start with the big picture first, and that is that I do sincerely believe that everyone at this table, despite what our specific opinions may be about this, is well intentioned on this topic, and we really just want the best for the students. And we all agree that, you know, students need to be treated with respect. And that's why this maybe can become potentially an emotional topic, because we want that sobality for the students. sobriety for the students. But, so I think in particular myself, that, you know, for a student, students often, as they're growing up, it's a time to kind of feel who you are, your identity is, so it's something in particular that they're confused about their gender, that particularly would be a very hard thing to, to deal with. And so they need, absolutely need to be treated with compassion. So this isn't about picking anybody as, you know, some folks might make it out to be. But, and these kids really need is to have grounded adults around them who can help them and guide them through these difficult topics. And chief among those adults really need to be the students' parents. So I do like that the model policies do try to address that. But also looking at the big picture, I think that sometimes it's most effective to deal with profound truths by telling a story. So I do want to just tell you a story, I think you've already heard before, just that I think addresses this area. And so with that in mind, once upon a time, there was this flourishing empire, and the emperor wanted to have a parade to celebrate all their successes. And for this auspicious occasion, he wanted to have the absolute best clothing possible to wear for the parade. So he called all the tailors in the land to come and put together what he's going to wear for this parade. And there are two particularly cunning tailors who came to him and said, "Oh, well, we will, we can make you the most amazing robe that robes anyone's ever seen." And in fact, they're so amazing that only super smart people can see them. And if you're not smart, then you can't see them at all. And so he said, "Well, absolutely, here's all my money, I don't care what it costs, make these robes for me." So they get to work, and of course, they're kind of, the whole time, they're just pretending to make something, and all the subjects are pretending to say how wonderful the robes are looking, how wonderful they're coming along, because no one wants to look foolish, after they've been told that only smart people can see these clothes. And so, you know, long story short, the day the parade comes, and everyone's been lying to the emperor the whole time, because no one wants to look foolish. And he's, they're sitting in the parade, and everyone, all the people have heard about this as well, and they're all saying, "Wow, he's the most amazing clothing we've ever seen in an emperor." Until finally, there's a child who sees the emperor and yells, "The emperor's naked," at which point everyone realizes it and laughs, because they've all realized they've been had. And, and the emperor then is embarrassed, and so it's a tough lesson that putting on airs doesn't really help anybody. And I think we finally got to a point here, we've kind of seen things go more and more along the way, that I reminded, 20 years ago now, I was in pilot training, and a fellow pilot training student of mine, was from Harvard, and so was his girlfriend, remember her telling us about, she was taking gender studies or something along those lines in, in college, at Harvard, telling us, you know, about how gender is simply a social construct, just in your head, which you're like, "Okay, I guess you can think whatever you want, no big deal." It seems like a silly way to spend hundreds, thousands of dollars in your education to learn about something like that. But, so we started out with this just being a social construct, something people will think about, then it turned into, okay, well, if it's just a social construct, well, then boys can play in girls' sports, why not? Just in your head. But then you see that it's not just social constructs. Boys tend to be, you know, stronger, faster, bigger, so it makes a big difference in sports, would destroy female sports. And then it went from there to now, we're not just, it's not just in their head anymore. Some kids are taking this and moving on to talking about surgery, and having life-changing surgery, where it's mutilating body parts, making, you know, girls sterile for the rest of their lives. And now it's gotten even further than that, where, may or may not have heard of this, I mean, it sounds bizarre that you may not even believe it, but in some schools, they're putting litter boxes in the bathrooms, and even at the work, because people are using litter boxes to fill the bathroom, as if they're cats. So I think it's definitely more than time to say that the emperor's naked, that this is just getting farther and farther from reality, and it's a distraction from real education. We have, you know, kids come to school so they can learn and be edified and not be deceived.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rolls. Appreciate it. All right, who's ready to go next? I won't force anybody. Ms. Gonzalez, are you ready?
In a minute.
All right. Ms. Hock?
Yes. I have a very short statement tonight. I think this is, is a very complex subject, and it's a very, very crucial subject for our students. It is not a distraction. We have, over the years, had many, many students who have gone through a variety of difficulties with negotiating these changes in all levels of our school system. As a school social worker, I worked with many students. Our administrative staffs have worked with many students in very positive and supportive and dignified ways. The times certainly are changing, and having been a career social worker for many, many years, I'm well aware of the many changes and how they impact families. I think at this point, that we, who are sitting on this stage, have our own opinions, but in order for this policy to apply to every student in this county, and every family in this county, that we need further information as to what some of the impact might be to our staff, as well as to the families. So I'm going to ask Dr. Boyd and Mr. Bush if we could appoint an ad hoc committee representative of staff and parents and students as well, in the community, to review this and return to us in an appropriate time. And I don't know what that timeframe would be, but I think when the committee is formed and begins to review this model policy, then they can give us a timeframe that we can go forward. Again, I reiterate that this is a model policy. The Department of Education, over many, many years, developed model policies about every subject under the sun. And we need to make sure that we are aware of the consequences of being in a Commonwealth, and that's that information and decisions occur at the local level.
Thank you, Ms. Hock. Ms. Hoover, Ms. Gonzalez, either one?
I would like another minute.
All right, Ms. Hoover.
Well, I do believe that Ms. Hock has a very good idea about a committee and collecting, you know, specifically students. I would love to hear from the students. I will also agree with Mr. Rolls, having been in the schools, speaking to the students, having adult children who have, I mean, some of these things are not new, some of them are. I will tell you that currently, there are huge distractions in the school with, with the topic of people wearing fuzzy things and asking for litter boxes, et cetera. That's a bit extreme. But I would say that a committee of, to, of parents, students, administrators, teachers, school board members even, to hear, you know, I would say, input. And it's not going to be an easy subject, but we, we owe it to everyone involved to, to consider.
Thank you. Gonzalez?
Okay, I was trying to organize my thoughts, keep myself from going off the rails here. I'm glad I let Ms. Hock go first, because I think establishing a committee is a, is an excellent, excellent, excellent idea, because I certainly don't think the five of us up here should be left alone to develop and implement a policy that's going to affect our entire student population. But as it, as it, as it stands on its face, as presented and included in this board packet, I disagree with this sample policy. And I disagree that anyone who wants the best for all of our students could support this policy as written. I completely agree that parents are paramount in the education of their children. I am a parent of children, I 100% agree with that. But even as this policy states, gender dysphoria is real. It says that on the very last page, right? And so I, you know, I, me personally, I do not believe that gender is simply a social construct. I think this is, as everyone has said, this is a very complex, very, very complex issue. I don't believe that students should share bathrooms and locker rooms willingly, like there are lots and lots of implications. But the problem is that I, well, and before that, I really hope, right, that in this, in today's age, right, that any, any student at home who, or in our student population, who is experiencing any sort of gender dysphoria at whatever stage in their life they may be, I hope they find that support at home. But the reality is that that's, that's not always the case, right? It's well-known that children who are transgender have very high rates of suicide. The risk of this policy, the risk of this policy as presented, is that it provides no outlet for a student who's not supported at home to have a space, safe space outside of home, right? So we just heard during public comment today about how the schools, as always, need to solve all of the world's problems, how the schools need to provide better resources for students with addiction problems. For those of us who sat up here during COVID, we heard for years on end about how the schools were safe places for students, and not everyone had the support at home, not everyone had the meals at home, not everyone has at home what they need. And for this hopefully small portion of our population that doesn't have the support at home that they need, let's hope, in all these other instances, we want our schools to be able to provide that for our students, and this policy strips that right away from children who may not have that support at home, specifically as it, as it relates to being a transgender individual. I understand we're not, you know, this policy as it is today is not up for specific approval, but the, the statements, the, the reason I say that are the statements in there, I don't have them pulled up, but specifically, I think it was like in section D, about how a transgender student, it was the definitions here, right? So it, it's, it's, it's saying that a transgender student is only a student who has been identified as one by their parents, and that school, for example, school division personnel shall refer to each student using only the pronouns appropriate to that sex appearing in the student's official record. Again, that, that removes all power from a child to be able to come and establish that safe space for themselves at school. There are other examples, but I, in a nutshell, I am not at all supportive of the policy as it's written, and I am in violent agreement that we need a committee established to most effectively develop a policy to address this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. I'm going to have to put a timer on myself, I know. All right, go ahead. I agree with everybody that this is huge. And to be honest, this goes directly to my faith. I can't help but speak about that. I am just one person, but it does go directly to what I believe. I do believe that there is a God, and I do believe that He has established absolute truths, and many things in this policy do sort of reference those areas. And I do believe that there are only two sexes. But again, this is my individual belief. But I'm also very much on the side of, I do not want to discriminate against anybody. I do like some of the things that were mentioned in here, especially, I do like the idea, which again, does fit even with biblical absolutes, and that the parents are responsible for the activities of their children. Many of us have, we read a lot of those religious exemptions for attendance, we read some of those reasons right there, and I agree with most of those that were written there. I also do like the idea, it's obvious that Governor Yonkin ran on this whole idea that parents need to have input into the education of their children. That's rather obvious, this was all through this, that that's, may, one of the main reasons why he wrote it. And you also have the 14th Amendment, and then of course, you also have, he mentions those, and the responsibility the parents have legally. And then, but in my opinion, of course, this does not even go far enough. But I do like the idea that before any counseling could take place of any of these students, that the parents need to be involved unless the student's over 18 years old. I do think that's important. I guess after my years, I know that Ms. Hock and I are, wouldn't say our ages, but we're similar in age at least, and we've probably experienced in different ways, a lot of these situations, and I have. I would even, I don't think she's experienced any less or more than I have of students that struggled with this whole situation. There are many, and I've dealt with a lot of them, and I'm sure many of us in this board maybe have too. But I also have seen, where I believe that, again, that following the policy of Almighty God, that I do believe that following His policies, and as closely as we can come close to that, that I do believe it is in the best interest of children in terms of their lives right now. I do like the fact, looking at this policy, in that, that He referenced also the, the right that we have to have our own faith, even as teachers, as administrators, and especially when He got into, you know, if a person claims to be of another gender, and it's been accepted, and the parents have even gone through the changes, and they want to use the restroom, then all the rest of the students that might use that restroom also have an opportunity to opt out. I do appreciate that. That I think does show that we're treating everybody equal, and that we're not discriminating whether you agree with transgender or you don't agree with it, we're not discriminating against either one. And I think that's important, because sometimes we look at the needs of, of one particular student and what they have, and yet we're not paying attention to this other student who, just by paying attention to the one student's need, it actually goes against this other student's needs. And so they need to have choices as to what they would do. And hopefully, that doesn't sound too confusing. I do think this is going to be a very large discussion. I do agree with Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Hock, that I think it'd be very valuable to have a committee. I agree with you. I, I think, you know what the problem is with that committee, is making sure that we have enough of those different areas and perspectives. I worry about the number that would have to be on that committee to be a good representative of our county. That would be my only concern. I mean, I think about all the different views from our county, both the religious views and the non-religious views, and the whole LGBTQ views, and all these different views is that, you know, and yet, we all know that you get a committee that's 10, 15 people, that's too many. And that's actually in a problem of itself. But I agree that that's something to look into, and I would ask Dr. Boyd, maybe, even to come up with some possible ideas of what a committee might look like, and this will be an ongoing discussion. And maybe next time, Dr. Boyd, if you can give just, not choose anybody, but some recommendations, or even two or three possibilities of what this committee might look like. Pardon? Oh, thank you. I have 30 seconds.
Mr. Chair, one more comment. We, we might want to include our student representative. I don't know whether he's had a chance to review this policy, but I'd like him to have an opportunity to look at the policy, the model policy.
That's a good point.
And perhaps give us your thoughts as a student representative next meeting.
Is this your second comment, Ms. Hock?
Was an aside.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, I've used my five minutes, and a lot of what I said was my personal views, I realize that. And hopefully, as a board chair, I will try to not necessarily push only my personal views in this, but I do think it's important that those are still something that I believe. So, all right. Second time, doing the second time through, if it could be a much smaller comment, so that we can get through this. Ms. Gonzalez, I'll start with you. You have a second comment that you'd like to make?
No, I have no further comments.
Ms. Hock?
My second comment is to support Ms. Mrs. Gonzalez in, in her strong feelings that the policy has a great many areas that are very, very sensitive and very complex. And Mr. Bush, I, I agree with you in that the impact on students is far-reaching with our students' mental health issues, which we see every day, are increasing, the, the number of student suicides is increasing, the number of parental issues coming to counselors are increasing. I, I think we need to be very, very careful about proceeding with this in any way except a focus on our student, the, the student support, what the student needs in order to achieve an excellent education.
Thank you. Last comment, Ms. Hoover.
So as I sit here and listen to the comments about the parents, I think it would be super advantageous for us to, to somehow educate the parents on this. advantageous for us to, to somehow educate the parents on this right here that we're looking at. Because while it's probably true that some students don't feel comfortable talking to their parents or don't have the ability or whatever that is, I would venture to say that if parents were made available, available, available this, you know, just obvious, obviously it is available, but more educated on this, maybe that would open up conversations for them to be able to have that they couldn't or didn't know they could have. So, um, parent education is very important and I feel very strongly personally about being educated because there were things that went on with my own children that I didn't even know to ask about. So maybe this could be a way of educating parents and that's all.
Mr. Olss?
Yes, I mean, everyone mentioned committees and I not necessarily totally against that, but I do share your concerns, uh, Mr. Bush, about, um, that that could become a distraction or just be very difficult to implement. So if we did do it, I definitely want to put some good thought into that about how that would actually not become a distraction and actually be a, a useful tool. And I do appreciate the comments about it being a model policy. And I do lament the fact that things like this get pushed from such a higher level. I do know, I think we have done a good job just locally handling things like this sensitively, and, uh, I wish that could just be the case. Um, but things for this and other areas, you know, previously too, we're being pushed from above. Uh, and it is confusing to call it a model policy, but then turn around and say that, um, we must be, do a policy consistent with it and, and maybe more comprehensive. So it's not, not saying it's, I mean, the name implies it's optional, but then the language inside says it's not optional. So that's, that is a little bit strange. I think mostly we're talking about the committees and of course, and as I said before, obviously gender dysphoria is real and it's something that we need to deal with well. Um, so I understand why there's this push to come up with a policy because it's there and we need to deal with it well. Um, but yeah, it's hard to come up with a policy when it's, when something like this oftentimes so much better dealt with just individually. Uh, but except that when it turns into something where somebody wants to use opposite sex bathroom, then I'll see it becomes everyone's problem, it's not just one person anymore. And then Ms. Hoover's comment about trying to educate parents somehow, uh, that sounds great. Um, and I, I just, I don't know how that would work, but, um, I think there's some potential there, so appreciate that idea. Uh, and I just wanna go more towards back to the details of the policy. Uh, I think it's, is a huge improvement over the version we saw in 2021. And then they more, few months ago, it went out for comment, even that one I thought was weak and very confusing. And I wrote comments to indicate as much, and I'm glad they strengthened it, but it's still, it's still pretty complex. And I don't know it's necessarily VDOE's fault. I mean, they, there's so many, if you look at all the different court rulings and laws and things, it's like they're trying to navigate a legal minefield. And so I first read this, I was kind of critical of it, but as I read it again, I'm like, I'm trying to put myself in their shoes, I'm thinking, trying to make the best out of a really difficult situation. So as I look, try to look at details, if you're trying to navigate all those, that, that minefield, it's almost impossible walking without stepping out of mine, or at least somebody claiming that you stepped out of mine here or there. So I guess we'll look through it and do the best we can. It would be good if we just keep it simple, the way I grew up, right? Just, there you go, it's what it is, is what it is. But ultimately, I gotta say that, um, no court decision, no legislative action or gubernatorial or presidential edict, or even a parent's will can change a boy into a girl or vice versa. And I think we need to stay grounded in reality and to best serve our students and to give them a proper education that helps them think clearly, learn science, logic, and critical thinking, all things that are gonna need to be good, self-governing, constructive member society, once they graduate to contribute to our community. That's all for now.
All right, I just have a couple of last comments. One, it's kind of interesting is, uh, Ms. Gonzalez, you think that this policy goes too far and I don't think it goes far enough. But I think that's almost, that's the problem with anything like this, is that, um, no matter what policy, if we're gonna deal with this at any level, no matter what policy we come up with, there's gonna be a group of people that will disagree with it and there will be controversy. So I do think, Ms. Hoover, you had a very good point, and that is, um, part of this can be educating the parents better. I think many parents may have only heard pieces in the news about this policy. And when Mr. Governor Youngkin first came out with it, it's changed. I do think that, uh, parents who may be listening to this right now, I think it'd be very valuable for you to go online. And if you can't find it, uh, Dr. Boyd, if you don't mind, uh, if they call the school office, you can give them where to find it. And please understand this does, even though Dr. Boyd and our school board office may tell you where to find it, it doesn't mean we've adopted any part of this. We're discussing it and that's all. And it is a model policy. We don't have to do this policy at all if we don't want to, or we could totally change it. But now it has come to us and I do believe it is worth discussing. And that's what we're gonna be doing over the next, um, couple of board meetings. I would say it's not necessarily gonna be on the agenda for the next board meeting, except for the fact, let's listen to Dr. Boyd's ideas about what a committee might look like. And, uh, that would be the only thing that would be on the next agenda. Let's give this some time. Let's hear from some of our constituents and let's entertain the possible idea of a committee in the future. All right, unless there's any more comments, we're gonna move forward. Yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
Can I have my second comment? I'll keep it short.
You didn't have it. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you offered it to me and I declined it, but I've since come up with it.
Okay.
So just in response to an earlier comment about, um, wanting to focus on, purely on educating our children, um, which is obviously what we want to do. I'm, I don't have a background in education other than my three point, you know, eight years on the school board here. But one thing I have heard discussed numerous times about effective, you know, connection with students in classrooms and how they are best situated to learn is addressing Maslow's hierarchy of needs. We talk about, right, that, you know, when it starts at the bottom with their physiological needs, if they don't have food, if they don't have shelter, if they're not provided with basic needs as humans, they're not gonna be able to come and be the best version of themselves in a classroom. As you move up the hierarchy, you move from physiological needs to safety needs to love and belonging, esteem, and ultimately at the top, your self-actualization, where you be, are able to become the most you can be. I would argue that by removing support structures for students in schools to be able to feel that sense of personal safety, esteem, what I think it's, I think the acknowledgement of gender dysphoria by those trusted adults around you, including those in the schools. Um, I think that weaves into a lot of these different levels of need that are, are required for not everyone, but for some portion of our population so that they can come to school and focus on getting an education. Um, so that's it.
Interesting that you mentioned Maslow's hierarchy of needs, because I was just looking, and I believe that he changed a little later to include a spiritual aspect. But anyway, that's a sidebar. And that's at the top one, hierarchy. Um, all right.
Spiritual can mean a lot of things.
Pardon?
Spiritual can mean a lot of things.
Yes, it can. Um, all right, let's, um, another sidebar is I was end up, I actually had begun possible work on my PhD, and this is exactly what it related to. Does cognitive, um, development have a relationship to spiritual wellbeing? Um, anyway, I didn't get very far with that. Um, all right, let's move forward and to the, um, committee reports. Um, do we have any committee reports? We'll start with Ms. Gonzalez.
I do not have any.
Hawk?
I do not.
I do not.
No.
I do not either. Um, however, this Thursday, um, as you might remember, I am on this board for the new lab school and, uh, we meet for the first time on Thursday, so I'm kind of excited to, um, hear about that. All right, superintendent's report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I first have a bit of housekeeping. Annually, we are responsible for providing notification that a current copy of all division policies and regulations approved by the school board are posted on the division's website and are available to employees and the public. Printed copies of all policies and regulations are available as needed to citizens who do not have access to, uh, online resources. So, uh, outside of that, I do want to say, uh, I'm very happy and excited to have Tony here. I've watched Tony for four years in high school. He's done great and wonderful things, uh, always being recognized in many different facets and ways, and I think he'll do an amazing job here on the school board. So I look forward to him being a part of our team. I did just wanna say, we are two weeks in, two weeks and one day into the school year. The opening this year, guys, has been wonderful. Uh, I've made it to every one of the schools. I, I had the opportunity today to see Potomac Elementary School Positive Behavioral Support Assembly. I went to Sealeston's Assembly for, uh, one book, one school, one book last week. Uh, I spent pretty much every morning at the middle school or the high school, and I saw the opening day at, uh, all the kindergarten folk, kids come into King George Elementary School. It's been a very positive, very optimistic, a lot of energy in the buildings. Uh, and all that is just a tribute to our staff who was just so hardworking and, uh, caring and considerate of our students and our families. So it's been a wonderful opening and I look forward to many, many more weeks of, of that. So, uh, thank you to everyone who made that possible. And finally, I want to say before I turn it back over is, uh, if you saw the Freelance Star this week, uh, we had a great accomplishment. Uh, we were recognized as finalists across the country, uh, for the Career Z Challenge. Yeah, woo! And, uh, that's in, in consideration of our instructional department, Ms. Christine Hill and Ms. Terry Rinko over here, our clerk, uh, spearheaded that effort. And it's one that's really gonna improve many opportunities for the students of King George County. So I'm looking really, uh, I'm looking forward to how that program is going to advance and provide, uh, many unique and new opportunities for students in King George County. So thank you both, and that's just a, a wonderful way to start the school year. And we look for many more, uh, amazing opportunities like that from, uh, our instructional department in terms of CTE. So thank you, and I turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. Board comments. Um, I'll ask for a volunteer to go first. Do I have a volunteer rather than simply assigning somebody?
I'll go first.
All right.
I also wanted to welcome Tony. It was nice meeting you. Looking forward to, to working with you this year. Um, I also wanted to thank, uh, Dr. Boyd and the staff that, uh, prepared the convocation for the 31st of July. That was a great, Ms. Davis did a great job and all our helpers with breakfast. The speaker was fabulous. Um, I did get to go to, all except for Potomac, on the first day of school and just kind of see what was going on. And yes, there was a lot of excitement. Um, I don't know, the younger students were very excited, the older students not so much. But I love the enthusiasm of the teachers, um, and the staff, and that was great. And I also wanted to congratulate Ms. Rinko and Ms. Hill for their great job in moving on to the next step of their prestigious, what's it called, uh, Career Z. Great job. And that's all.
Next.
Okay, I'll go. Um, first, a very hearty thank you to all our staff. Um, and I always like to start out at this point of the year with saying a very special thank you to our custodians. Uh, they have been at, at work long before many of us came back in, into the buildings. Uh, I know many of you, uh, employees are full-time, do 20 days, et cetera. You're here, you, you, you have put the days in. Our custodians also do, and I want to say a special thank you to them. Um, another thank you to the folks at the, excuse me, the King George Education Foundation for doing what they do so well. Uh, they provide community support to our school, students and staff. Uh, the Education Foundation has a webpage, a Facebook page, and even a physical location for their Fox Marks store, and I'll use quotation marks because there's no money that changes hands. They provide supplies to staff and students and families, uh, out of the generosity from the community and the, the foundation itself that provides, uh, all kinds of school supplies for, uh, teachers and students and families. I'd, I'd really like for our board and Dr. Boyd, uh, to visit the Fox Mark store, Fox Smarts store, uh, which is located in the old vocational building at, like, whatever direction, I guess it's up that way. Um, they are open on Thursday mornings from nine to 12:00, and they are very much appreciate visitors. Um, they do a phenomenal job with, with a very small staff there, and I think the foundation itself is doing so much for our school system. So a special thank you to them. I also want community members to know that we have advisory committees. You've heard several references, uh, as we talk about committee meetings. They are set up each year in a number of categories. Um, and I'll quickly go over them. There's the CTE, the Gifted Education, the Health Advisory, the Technology, the Title One, and the Code of Conduct Committee. If any people, if any folks, whatever your status in the community, is interested in becoming a member of any of these, we ask that you contact Dr. Boyd by September 4th. Is that correct, Dr. Boyd? Okay. Also, um, I spent some time looking at last year's, uh, update, last year's qua, School Quality Report, and I'm looking forward to seeing the new one when it comes out, I, I guess, pretty shortly. Is that hopefully right, Dr. Boyd? And I'll let you speak to that.
I believe September 12th rings a bell, so it'll be very soon.
Rings a bell to me, too. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk.
The three of us.
Oh.
That was the coin.
Um, so I want to welcome Tony. Um, it's great to have you up here. I know we've been hearing from you for a while, um, at the podium, uh, within J R T C. So it's great to have you up here, um, on the, well, not always on the stage, but at the table with us. So welcome, look forward to hearing from you, um, as time progresses. So, um, certainly thank you to all of our staff, um, across the board that have made the first, I already lost track of time, what, two weeks of school? I'm a big success. I know my, 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 my Potomac hawks are going strong, so thanks to everyone, um, that have made that a great, a great kickoff this year. Um, and then my only other point is a reminder, um, that we need to wrap up our superintendent evaluation process. So hopefully everyone, being the five of us, um, have reviewed Dr. Boyd's self-evaluation that he sent last time, or provided us with, um, reviewed the leadership and staff survey results and also completed the survey. I don't know if everyone has completed the survey yet, I'm thinking maybe not, I got something. Um, so a reminder to get the survey done so that the responses can be compiled and we can review them, um, at either the next meeting or the meeting thereafter. And then the other piece is the S O L data once we get it. So perhaps I could suggest that between Mr. Bush and Dr. Boyd, you figure out the timelines for those and we put those on meeting agendas so we can get them wrapped up?
I believe the next meeting. I think the next meeting we're supposed to discuss as a board after we've done the survey and then also we've looked at his self-evaluation, we're supposed to do a lot of that at the next meeting. The only thing that we're not gonna do is we won't have the S O L stuff.
Right, the S O L data. Right.
We're good.
Okay. All right, that's all.
So also, welcome to Tony, welcome to the, the stage. I hope you enjoy your time up here, and it's always great to have, uh, student perspective, so, very interested in supporting you. And also let me know, I'll say thank you to Mr. Steph for, he's been a faithful attendee at the meetings, uh, giving us some insight, you'll see the topic of substance abuse. Wanted not, uh, these unhealthy distractions. So just thank you for, uh, that nation. Convocation for the first time this year, and that was a wonderful experience, just really impressed by the energy, it was uplifting, and the, the speaker, of course, was amazing, so well done bringing him in. And, uh, then of course, you'll always like to see our accomplishments bragged on in the Freelance Star, so thank you, Ms. Hill and, uh, this, this Rinko as well for that. And, uh, and I'll just move on to what I mentioned I was gonna mention earlier, that being, uh, so, I was reminded of something, some of this, I shouldn't, uh, request. Confusion both inside that I think there often sometimes is a, some outside the school division, schools, and there's a question bomb that, well, if I go public, there's expression anymore, and that's really not true. I mean, there's still the First Amendment. And, but I understand why there's some confusion about that, our apprehension given some of the Supreme Court rulings since the 60s that kind of took the understanding, original intent of the First Amendment and changes somewhat from what was understood for the first century and a half or more of our nation's history. And so I just would hate to have the perception, either inside the school or out, that we don't have that freedom, which is our first constitutionally protected freedom. And to that end, I do know, I mean, there is confusion, so to try to help relieve that, the Department of Education at the federal level, and then also the Virginia Department of Education put together guidance a number of years back to try to flesh that out so that people didn't have to be worried, okay, what can I do this? Can I not do this? Am I going to be getting in trouble? Do I have to check my faith at the door when I come to church to school or need to work? And it shouldn't be the case either way. And as important as that is, we talked about identity a little bit tonight. Each person's identity is important, and probably the majority of students as well as staff are people of faith, and that shouldn't be a part of their identity they have to leave behind. And so given that DOE and BDOE guidance, there's training that helps people understand that better so they can be more fully themselves at school and at work. And so I think we would do well to encourage that, perhaps even mandate it. Like, oh, it helped just improve the environment and the diversity and bring out the best in everybody here coming to King George Schools fully themselves. Like, something to consider going forward. And then we also had the invocation first time today. And I think, as I mentioned previously, that it could be wise for us to address that in our protocol, to have some sort of expectation for how that will be done going forward. And I will plan to submit that for the packet for next time to try to invite people on some sort of like rotating basis so that we have good representation, you know, throughout the community and through us as our community's representatives to make that happen. That's all I have for now.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of things that I want to say in board comments. The first one is today alone, I had two phone calls. Both of them lasted almost two hours, and it all was the same subject. And something that hasn't been mentioned, but is extremely important, there is a public meeting about on September the 4th, the 5th, excuse me, September the 5th for the Board of Supervisors concerning the possibility of a data center coming to King George. And it's extremely important. It's September the 5th, public hearing. But I would, there's a, obviously, there's a lot of enthusiasm because if we get this data center, then there'll be a large amount of possible revenue that will be coming into the schools, which has a direct impact positively on the school. But then there's also a lot of concerns because sometimes there's, we don't get as much as we would think we'd get. And so I would advise as many people who can to come to that public hearing and listen to what is being presented because it's going to have an impact on this entire county, a very large one. So it might be worthwhile, if you haven't heard about it, September the 5th. I believe it's going to be at the Rivercombe Building, but.
It's going to be here.
Oh, it's going to be here at the middle school? Oh, all right. But to attend that because it's going to affect all of us. Looks like there's surprises on everybody's face, but if you haven't heard of that, I would encourage you to try to be here. It's, we, I appreciate, and I just want to know that I respect all the board members here, and I appreciate the comments, and we all have different beliefs and feelings, but I do believe we have one thing in common is we want to do what's best for the students. And I appreciate and respect all the board members that are here. I did want to thank Potomac Elementary. It's interesting. I think that's the first time we had staff children lead the pledge. That was, that was good. And also welcoming our student reps. Thank you. I think it's a wonderful idea that having rotating three of you because you represent different aspects of the high school, and what a great idea. I'm not sure whether we're going to end up with a middle school rep, but hopefully we will, and possibly at the next meeting, we'll be able to see that middle school rep. I'm looking forward to go to this first lab school meeting, which will be this Thursday. And when, at the next meeting, I'll give a little report on the progress that's being made in that area. All right, I don't have anything else. So do we have a motion to go into closed session? Oh, excuse me. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Here it is. I recognized you, and then I didn't recognize you. Yes, comments. Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to add on to the comments. Like many of you guys were saying, start of the school year has been outstanding, been very, really, really positive. One thing I think that really helped to contribute to that was, at least at the high school, was our first day bringing back the students, not getting them fully involved with classes, having that half-day schedule just to get them back into the building, so having them make friends again, communicate, learn the teachers, get to know them. Another really, really great thing was kind of having this mentorship set up because as a senior, we was with the freshman that whole day with, whether it's with the motivational speaker, Rohan Murphy, which was excellent, 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 or going out to the field day and having them with us where they can come ask us questions. Out of the planning blocks to go roam the hallways, make sure the students are in the classes, make sure they get an education. But that takes away from the education of all students. So having the SSO there that his main job is to just make sure the students are safe, make sure the students are in the classes alleviates a lot of that stress on the teachers, where we can really focus on getting educated to. Speaking on, going back to the gifted program, I just want to say amazing, amazing opportunity for the student at King George to have that. I personally went through the gifted program. I actually was part of a Department of Defense Education School over there on base at Dogland. So we had programs like the gifted, like Abbott, and I know they get a lot more funding than we do here. But I just wanted to say that having those resources available to students is huge. Achieve and make sure that they're progressively setting the bar higher and higher. So as you guys continue to look at that, it really impacts us here at King George. And just last thing, going into that model plan. I know everyone on the board, we all have our personal opinions, personal beliefs, but as I said, and I think it's very, very important to get the students' input on this, too, whether it's reviewing and that, getting the packs or student body, too, because this is going to be a very heated, heated topic. But I think it's important to get everyone's input on this because it not only affects parents, it affects the students, and it affects our community. This is a very big issue that we have to come together to have these conversations, have these discussions, and really find out a plan that works for the best of the students. Thank you.
Excellent. Like, seeing we're going to have another good student rep. Sorry, and I usually will recognize you every time. I'm sorry, this time I was, since that's for volunteers, I don't think I've ever done that, or I don't know if any board chairs done that. So immediately, I, there's no order, and so please forgive me for that. I won't, I won't forget again. All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the King George County School Board return, excuse me, pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3712A of the Code of Virginia, I move at the board convene in a closed meeting to review higher substitutes and resignations as permitted under 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're in closed session. All right, do I have a motion to return to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3712D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second and certified.
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 And the chair also certifies. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we are now in open session. All right, action resulting from closed session. Do we have a motion to approve those personnel that were presented?
I move we approve the personal actions that's presented.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we are adjourned.